Beautiful. I like that part. This is Wednesday, April the 12th, 2023, and it is the regular meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the plan.
Oh, you may not see this.
To everyone who works the sentence, one nation, one God, individuals, individuals who can ingest this all as well.
Thank you very much. So it is four o'clock and we have begun. We do have some ground rules, staff. You promised to have those up for me. Okay? Welcome. You may have noticed I am not Chairman Kim Depew, but I'm filling in. And I am Robert. There are a few ground rules. And please turn off your cell phones or turn them down. Please be polite, because we're always polite here, to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, fill out a speaker information form at the table over there and submit it to the planner before the start of the meeting. Speakers must use the microphone to capture comments in minutes. We have a speaker's clock and we have time limits. It is five minutes for those who want to speak. Call to the public, 10 minutes for applicants, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for applicant's rebuttal. Okay? And a little red light will let you know. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three are from cities, at least six are from the unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. With special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Special use docket decisions. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. Appeals of special use decisions can be made to the Board of Supervisors and filed within 15 days of the commission approval. Appeal procedures can be obtained on the county website. For assistance, contact the case planner. Okay? Other docket decisions. Dockets other than special use requests result in recommendations forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice disagreements with these recommendations, attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing dealing with the docket. Okay? And here we are today. There's a quiz. Guys, pay attention. All right. Thank you very much. We will roll call for a quorum. Mr. Marsky, are you present?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Present.
Nancy Welch?
Present.
Okay. Mr. Watkins?
Present.
Mr. Young?
Present.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Present.
I am Robert Montgomery. I am present and Chairman Depew is absent today. And so we do have a quorum. Okay? At this time, we will have call to the public for five minutes each. And we do have public today. Is there anybody would like to present?
And obviously, this is for items that are not on the agenda.
Yes. I'll read the call to the public. Pursuant to the Arizona statute, section 38-431.01, paragraph H, "This is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss the items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision analyzer date." Wow. Okay? And once again, any public comment? At this time, seeing none, move over. This is going to be approval of the previous minutes from last month. Does anyone have any comments or corrections for the minutes?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir?
I move where you approved last month's minutes.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on those minutes? And we'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Marsky?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Yes. And Ms. Welch?
Abstain, I say wasn't able to read in the whole meeting.
Okay. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Aye.
And Mr. Montgomery is aye. Those minutes are approved. Okay? This is a public hearing time for the first item today, which will be different. It is the docket Master Development Plan 22-01. And RZ 23-05 holds Stewart Road, a request for a master development plan and rezoning to allow a retail and entertainment complex northeast of Wilcox. The applicant and staff are requesting the item be continued until May the 10th of this year. Planning and zoning commission to allow the applicant time to address staff concerns. So at this time, we're going to postpone that with a motion.
I move the table. Docket MDP 22-01 and RZ 23-05 until the May 10th, 2023.
Very good. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. Any other questions about that? We'll go for the vote to table. Mr. Marsky?
Yes.
And Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Welch?
Yes. Yes.
Is that a yes? Okay. Mr. Watkins?
Yes.
And Mr. Young?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Aye.
And Mr. Montgomery is aye. Okay, that item is tabled until May the 10th. Second item today. This is docket RZ 23-03, Terry Diversified. Request to rezone parcel 302-11-032A and 032B from R36 to general business. The current and proposed use of the property is an auto impound storage lot. At this time, we will look for the planning director's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is a request from Terry Diversified LLC to rezone from R36 residential, one dwelling per 36,000 square feet to general business. This request will legitimize an auto impound storage yard, which is a permitted use in general business. The property is located on 618 North Central Avenue in Bowie. It's about two parcels that are 2.2 acres in size. The auto impound yard is existing, as I mentioned, and this is a result of a code violation case. A couple pictures of the property. The zoning to the east, the surrounding zoning is R36, but the uses are some commercial and residential to the north. There to the south, there's a single-family residence, which is owned by the applicant. To the east is owned by the Bowie School District, but the property is mostly vacant. And then to the west is a cemetery. The applicant is, we are going to be asking for a condition of this property or this approval that they screen the north and east property boundary and a request to modify site development standards to not require screening to the south. That concludes my short presentation. So if you have any questions for me, the applicant's representative is in the audience today.
Okay. So that is right. At this time, if the applicant would like to take the stand and let us know what's going on.
This has been a tow yard since-
Could we ask your name, please?
Christina Schroeder.
Okay.
It's been a tow yard since at least 2005. It's always been a tow yard as far as I've been on the property since 2008. When the property was purchased, we believed it was TR36 was transitional and was already used as a tow yard. Somewhere down the line, it got reverted, possibly back to the residential. So we're just looking forward to continue as it is, as business-wise.
Okay. Is there more?
No. Anything else?
Well, let's see. I guess we will. Thank you. You may come back. We'll ask for comments from other persons, either in favor or against, online or in person. Hearing none. I don't suppose you want to rebut your own comments?
No.
Okay. You're good then?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. We declare the public hearing portion is closed. Now we'll call for commission discussion. Commissioners may ask questions of the applicant or staff. If they do, you can come back up, okay? Commissioners, are there any questions? No? Okay. Then I will ask for the planning director's summary.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff does recommend forwarding this to the Board of Supervisors with the recommendation of approval, a condition of screening the north and east property boundary, and a modification to the screening on the south property boundary.
Okay. Then if there's no other discussion, we'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors for the zoning of docket RZ 23-03 from R36 to general business. Factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
Second.
Very good. Any further questions or discussion on this motion? Commissioners, okay? Then we will have a roll call vote, in favor or against. Again, Mr. Marsky?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Limbaugh?
Aye.
And Mr. Montgomery is aye. This motion is approved. Congratulations. Very good. So, let's see. Moving right along here. This is the third docket item, and somebody might help me with the name. This is docket RZ 23-04. Is it Land Whirlin?
Yep.
Land Whirlin. Okay. Thank you. The applicant requests a rezoning from SR43, single residence, one dwelling per 43,000 square feet to RU4, one dwelling per four acres. And at this time, could we have the, okay? Could we have the presentation from the directors?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, commissioners. The applicant is Mr. Randy Whirlin, and he is present online this evening. As stated, this current zoning is SR43, which is one dwelling per 43,000 square feet. The proposed zoning is RU4, which is one dwelling per four acres. It is in growth category D, rural areas. Plan designation is rural. It is located in the Mid-Sulphur Springs Valley Community Plan area. The existing is vacant property, and the proposed use is a permitted single-family home. It's located on the northeast corner of South Garden Road and West March Street in Sun Sights area. During this process, the parcels were merged together, so the current parcel number is Total parcel size is 4.38 acres, and you can see it highlighted on the screen this evening. This is an example of the type of home the applicant is looking to build on the property. This is the applicant's site plan showing the home, a future shop building, which is the reason for the request. The SR zoning district is restrictive to the size of detached buildings. It cannot be larger than a primary structure, hence that is one of the primary reasons for this request this evening. Some photographs of the site. Staff finds two favors, excuse me, in, two factors in favor of approval, excuse me. Request complies with 11 of the applicable rezoning factors used by staff to analyze requests. Request would be in keeping with the character of the existing area. We find no factors against approval. We received no comments either in favor or against this request. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions following that and comment, public comment.
Very good. Thank you. We'll declare the public hearing section open at this time. So if our applicants would like to come up and make a statement?
The applicant is online.
Online.
Mr. Whirlin, now would be your time to make a statement to the commission.
Yes, sir. No, I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend in person. I wanted to, because it's important to me, but I do travel for work a lot, and I had to be in California this week. Everything that Mr. Kersham has described is accurate, and I just wanted to make the point that you guys have done a couple of these for my father as well, and he's built really beautiful homes. And the last three he's done, I think, have had a sold or had an appraisal value of a collective one and a half million dollars. And he's going to essentially serve as my general on this project, my general contractor. And so it's not to rest on his laurels, but to make the point that this will be a really beautiful home that's built to modern standards and codes, and you won't have to worry about some sort of palace shack going up there, and it'll be nothing but value brought to the county and to the surrounding community. The surrounding community of which has already had many RU4 rezones in the area. So I think it'll fit right along with everybody else there. You'll rest my time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will ask for comments from other persons. Any of you guys not here for that? Okay. Are there any online staff?
Is there anybody online that would like to speak on the Land Whirlin rezoning request?
Apparently not. Okay. Then I'm not anticipating a rebuttal from the applicant.
You are correct.
Very good. Thank you. And we'll declare the public hearing closed and call for commission discussion, if there is to be any. You may ask questions of the applicant, so staff. I can see you thinking, Mr. Marsky.
No, I have no question.
Okay.
I just have a comment. Randy's father built a fantastic house.
Thanks, sir.
I always notice when there are no factors against. Kind of stands out. Okay? Then that would be, public hearing is closed. Call for the commission discussion, which has just ended. Call for the planning director's summary and recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do not have any recommended conditions of approval typically on these. The only ones we would have is that they merge their properties. That's already been completed by the applicant. So again, we do recommend approval, and there's a sample motion on the screen for you this evening.
Mr. Chair? I move to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors of rezoning docket RZ 23-04. Lynn Whirlin, located on parcels 117-04-116A from SR43 to RU4. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Second. Thank you. Any other questions or discussion on the motion? Okay. Then any final questions from the commissioners on this motion? Hearing none, we will call for a vote. Mr. Marsky?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Limbaugh?
Aye.
And Mr. Montgomery is aye. This motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Fourth item, docket SU 23-07. Apco, special use authorization request for two additional natural gas turbines with two 85-foot towers in height at the Apache Power Plant in Cochise, Arizona. That is ambitious. So at this time, staff director, could we have a presentation?
Good evening, everyone. This is a special use authorization request by Apco for two new gas turbines at the Apache Generating Station. It is also a request for a waiver of the heavy industry zoning district's 50-foot height limitation for structures. The gas turbines will be 85 feet in height. The property is located off of Highway 191 near Cochise, Arizona. Here are some photos of the site. The parcel history is as follows. The site was used by SSVEC for electricity generation in the early 1950s. Apco acquired the site, and the Apache Generating Station has been operating since 1963. Apco received a special use authorization for eight ash ponds in 1993. In 2002, it was granted a rezoning of the property to heavy industry and a special use authorization for a gas turbine and diesel storage. This evening's request is for an expansion to include two new 85-foot gas turbines. This is a rendering that shows the location of the current generation and the proposed gas turbines on the left. The properties surrounding the site are zone SR22, RU4, and heavy industry. Development Services has received four letters of opposition. The location of these property's owners is outlined on the slide in red. Two property owners did not disclose their location, so their property is not noted on the slide. There are 10 factors used to evaluate special use authorization request. The applicant complies with eight factors, partially complies with one factor, and will comply with an additional factor if a waiver is granted. The factors in favor of the request are one and two. The project complies with the duly adopted plans and the zoning district purpose statement. In this case, the comprehensive plan specifically calls out power plants as being appropriate in this growth area. Factor number three, the project complies with the development along major streets factor. Here, the property is accessed from an existing access off of Highway 191, and no additional access is proposed. Factor number four, the project complies with the adequate services and infrastructure factor. The reviewing agencies did not recommend improvements or mitigation. Factor five, the project complies with the significant site development standards. The project will comply with the site development standards if a waiver is granted to the 50-foot height restriction in the HI zoning district. Again, the proposed gas turbines are 85 feet in height. Factor six, the project partially complies with the public input factor. There were four letters of opposition. The property owners cited decreased property values and the inability to develop their properties residentially. Factor number seven, the project complies with the off-site impacts factor. This expansion will not significantly increase off-site noise, odors, dust, lights, or storm water. Factors number eight and nine, the project complies with the water conservation factor and the hazardous material factor. And lastly, factor number 10, the project complies with the traffic circulation factor. The expansion will not change the use of the access and will not significantly increase traffic. There are no factors against approval. Please let me know if I may answer any questions, and the applicant is here to provide you with additional information.
All right. Thank you. We'll declare the public hearing section open and ask for the applicant's statement.
Good afternoon. Thank you, commission and staff, for hearing our special use modification. My name is Michelle Freearc. I'm the executive director of Regulatory Affairs and Corporate Services with Arizona Electric Power Cooperative, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have concerning our modification requests.
Any questions from the commissioners?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
What would be the impact on your, or to your customers should this request be denied?
So the proposal, we're going to do two new gas turbines at our facility, and it's really to help diversify our portfolio. We are, as the planner pointed out, we're an existing facility, serving the members. Most of you may be served by Sulphur Springs Valley Electric Cooperative. That's one of the members that we serve. But we are a facility that has the growing needs of, as areas are growing with more loads. These units are also going to be integral as we start, as we start developing renewables into our system. We need fast ramping, quick start units to do that intermittency when the renewables aren't available to be dispatched. So that's a real need that we have as the portfolio starts transitioning through all the regulations that we have to comply with through the Environmental Protection Agency. So this is just adding to our portfolio, like most utilities across the state are doing. You know, what we have today, as you saw on that slide, we haven't added generation at that site since 2002, a major turbine. We did a solar facility a few years ago, but we're in dire need of, you know, additional generation just for the loads coming in.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What's existing height out there now?
So in the picture that was shown through the rendering, the two new gas turbines for the L and 6000s, it'll be at 85 feet. There's one existing right next to it. You can see it says current generation right next to proposed. There's an existing unit that we built in 2002, so it's going to be the same exact height as that unit. And then you can see a little further north is the larger stack that's for the steam units.
The larger one is higher than 85 feet?
That large, well, the large stack that you see further right, that's 200, 400 feet.
Wow, okay.
So the new ones that were proposing will be at 85 feet, which are in line with the current gas turbine that's, they'll be placed adjacent to it.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Thank you. You may come up if there are more questions, okay? So right now, we're looking for persons, other persons' comments, either for or against. And not today. And then again, I have to ask this. Do you want to rebut your comments of just now? Okay. I didn't think so. So we'll declare the public hearing is closed. At this time, we'll call for discussion from the commission. You may ask questions of the applicant or the staff. Are there any questions? Commentary?
I'm just curious as to how long will the building process take?
It is anticipated that it'll be about an 18-month process. This is just one of many regulatory approvals we have to have, so we'll be doing air permitting modifications, and then we go through the NEPA process because we're borrowers of the Rural Utility Service. So once all of those permits are cleared, then- So, once all of those permits are cleared, then construction will start, and it'll take about 18 months. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Not hearing any. Okay, thank you very much. We'll ask for the, call the hearing, public hearing closed. Ask for the director's summary and recommendation.
For docket SU 23-07, staff recommends approval and the granting of the waiver request for the 50-foot height limitation in the Heavy Industry Zoning District. A sample motion is on the screen.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve docket SU 23-07, Apco Gas Turbines, and approve the following waiver. Section 1403.01 of the zoning regulations that prohibit structures greater than 50 feet in height in the HI zoning district shall be waived. The factors of approval constitutes findings of fact.
Second. You have a second. Any other discussion about the motion? Hearing none, then we will call for the vote. We'll call vote as before. Mr. Martsky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Welch?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Montgomery is aye. Again, unanimous vote for approval. All right. Very good. Ambitious project. Can't wait to see that go. Thank you. The item number five today, it is the docket SU 23-08, Slaughterhouse, special use authorization to expand an existing meatpacking business to include an onsite slaughterhouse. At this time, we'll ask for the planning director's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The parcel size is 15 acres. Less than one acre will be dedicated to the special use. It is on parcel 118-01-004G. The zoning is RU4, which is rural, one dwelling unit per four acres. It is in growth category D. It is designated as agriculture and/or green space by the Mid-Sulphur Springs Area Plan. Existing uses, there's an existing meat processing on the site. There's also agricultural pivots. Proposed use will be the same with an 1,100-square-foot slaughtering building and outside pens. So, the applicant is already in business on the site. He received a commercial permit to do meatpacking on the property, which is a permitted use. With that, they just have to get a commercial or non-residential permit. The applicant is looking to expand his business and include doing onsite slaughter instead of having to wait for outside processors due to just the large wait times that we're experiencing. So the property is located between four pivots. There really are no neighbors nearby. It's in a largely agricultural area. The applicant is the closest person nearby. We have received no comments in opposition to the request. We did get one letter in support. So this is the applicant's site plan, kind of showing that they've got the 50-acre parcel, but the disturbance is only on a portion of it. And we have the site plan showing that there will be some outside pens where the animals will be kept briefly before taken inside the building and slaughtered, and then taken to the other building for processing. These are some photographs of the site. Looks like a typical agricultural site with metal buildings, farm equipment, et cetera. There are 10 factors that we use to evaluate all special use proposals. As submitted, the application complies with nine. The only, there's only one factor that is not applicable, and that's development along a major street. It does have access on a private easement and then to Pinto Lane. We have multiple factors in favor of supporting this request, including it complies with the nine of the criteria used to evaluate the request. It will provide diversity of business, as discussed in the comprehensive plan. It will support entrepreneurship, as again talked about in our comprehensive plan. It will support the preservation and expansion of Cochise County's agriculture and support farming, ranching, and other agricultural-related activities. The request is consistent with the, and compatible with zoning district purpose statement, and we didn't receive one letter in support. We have no factors against this request. With that, that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions following the applicant's presentation, and I do believe the applicant is in the audience with us this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go for the public hearing open at this time. There is, is the applicant available for a statement? Very good. Would you like to come up, sir?
Good evening. Thank you for considering this request. Mr. Kersham has presented the docket as...
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, sorry, yes. I'm Josh Cohen.
Very good.
And as, I'm the owner of the property and am applying for the special use for this project.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
For my purposes, the presentation by staff was pretty comprehensive. Are there any other questions? Anybody? Okay. Well, that was quick. You can, you can take your seat. If there are more questions, you can come back up, okay? Thank you. Is there anybody with commentary either in favor or against? Online?
Is there anybody online that is here to speak on the special use 23-08 Slaughterhouse?
I guess not. Very good. And for the last time today, I think, you probably don't want to rebut your own comments, so we'll skip that, but see, I have to say that. Then we'll declare the public hearing closed. Call for the commission discussion, if there is to be any questions for the applicant or staff.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
There was a statement in air from the game and fish. Do you intend to do law game also? Answer was no.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I just wondered why game and fish had made a comment on it, because normally they do not allow another.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Mr. Martsky, so in all of our dockets, we transmit out to game and fish, and it's typically on like land disturbance and stuff. So for example, the rezoning docket that the commission saw last month in St. David that had all those trees on it, game and fish provided comments basically stating that the applicant should consider the time of year that they're going to disturb the site to make sure that there's no nesting birds, and to advise them that there could be additional conditions or requirements. So that would have, I don't remember their comments specifically, I apologize, but I would imagine that's essentially what their comments would have been based on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Then at this time, we'll ask for the planning director's summary and recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have a recommendation for approval. We have one condition, and that is, which the applicant and I have already discussed and he's agreed to, that all animal byproducts will be stored in refrigerated units until picked up by an animal rendering company or otherwise properly disposed of. That condition, just for the benefit of the commission, was added because I have in the past received some comments from citizens about other places in the county where they allow the carcasses to decompose naturally in the back of the facility, and there have been concerns expressed about that. So, the applicant said that that was what he was planning on doing anyways. So with that, we do have a sample motion on the screen this evening, and I'll be happy to answer any final questions the commission may have.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve docket SU 23-08, Slaughterhouse on parcel 118-01-004G, with the conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors of approval constitute in the findings of fact.
Second. I heard a second. Did that come from Mr. Young?
Yeah.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions about the motion? Commission? Okay. Then we'll just call for the, we'll call a vote to approve. Mr. Martsky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Welch?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Because I do business with the applicant, I abstain.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
And Mr. Montgomery is aye. So that motion carries with one extension and one absence. Okay. And at this time, that is the agenda items. We'll call for the planning director's report, please.
So, Land Whirlin and Terry Diversified will go to the Board of Supervisors on the 25th of April. The docket that the commission heard two months ago, the Kaibab Manufacturing, that has been appealed, that's also scheduled to go April 25th before the Board of Supervisors. We do have a couple of variances that are coming up that do not affect this board, that will be going to a board of adjustment. The Serrada appeal, that is scheduled to go for the board May 9th. Our May 10th meeting, we do have several items. One is a special use for contract construction over, let's see, south of the Mustang Corners area. We've got a rezoning from R 36 to RU4. Actually, we got two of those, or one to RU2, one to RU4. And then we have a large 3,500-acre solar facility in Wilcox between the 191 and Taylor Roads that'll be coming. There is a possibility that the MDP from tonight could be on that agenda as well, though as we sit here tonight, they still have not addressed or even started to address some of the major issues that staff had on that. So, that may be taken off the agenda indefinitely. In June, we already have at least one item scheduled, and we'll see if we have anything else coming in. I believe that is all that I have. Anything to add?
Is that good? Do it? Thank you. Thank you for the director's report. One last call to the commissioners on recent items or matters of interest. Having covered them all comprehensively, I think we're done. Okay. No further items on this board will adjourn. 4:43 PM.